Should be right there.
All right, we're good.
All right, I am calling this board work session to order on November 18th, 2020. And we're going to go through our agenda. We're going to start with Kristen.
Hello, I am happy to be back. Glad this worked this time. Yay. So, um, so what we're going to do tonight is look at your board operating protocol. And I'm going to share, we are going to try and use Mural. If you all are able to get into it, I know John has already discussed the complication he's got. I have to work around for that. And then you all are going to discuss board member communications. We'll talk about board reports if that's part of the discussion. I know Troy has some stuff to share too. So I, and Troy, if I can share my screen.
I have shared with you, so you should be able to.
Right.
Do I need to stop here?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Let me share this. So I went through your board operating protocol and I aligned it to policy where it could be aligned. So what I'd like to do is just is have you look at this for a minute. So, so A, as you likely know, your school board operating protocol is very long. So what I will encourage us to do tonight, if we can get on Mural, I want to talk about a couple of things before that. But what I would love for you all to do to bring some focus to this is to really prioritize the areas that are the most important. That could mean they need some work or it could mean that you do really well and you want to keep highlighting them. But I want to, I want to look at that and drill down a little bit. But some things I'll show you, it's two pages long. So I've got page one up first. So like I said, where I could, most of these are going to align in some way with your B section policies. So I just put in red where they do align. Some of them, like number five here, align to more than one. Not all of them are in policy and they don't have to be. That's, you know, that's why you can put anything you want in an operating protocol. One thing that I highlighted here is I think, so, so this is clearly important. So what I highlighted here says the board can expect such communication from the superintendent at least weekly during crisis situations, the superintendent will send out an email alert and then attempt to reach board members by telephone beginning with the board chair. And that's great, but I highlighted this as an example of something you might be able to pull out and put somewhere else. So for example, this also, this isn't, for the most part, this isn't a board superintendent operating protocol, it's a board one. So this, this operate, or this obligates the superintendent as well. But I often develop communication protocols with boards and superintendent and it highlights these specific things. They can be short, but it's like, it will say, I just did this last night, I think it was last night, time has any meaning. But during a crisis, this is what the board can expect from the superintendent. We talk about those things, make sure that everybody's on the same page and that Troy would know what he can mix, what he's expected to do and weigh in on those expectations. And then during something important happens, but is not a crisis, how might the board expect that communication? And then there are some other things like, how does the board go about visiting schools if they want to? Or what happens if the media calls, those, those kinds of things. And so, so you may be able to pull some of these out and put them somewhere else. So I just highlighted that one. One that I wanted to, so BDDC is, is a policy that, that mentioned, that is, that talks about board, I think, board agenda, but this specific one, number 12, does not align with that. And I should just, let me, let me pull up BDDC. Standby. Um, sorry. Shouldn't have. But I can get it. So your BDDC is board meeting procedures. And it, it talks about how a copy of the agenda will be posted in each district facility on the day of the meeting. And, you know, when things will be sent out, it's long enough that I won't read it to you. But it doesn't align with this. So you may want to, may want to look at this because it's easier to modify this than it is to modify policy. Looking at the second page, I wanted to point out number 17 because this is one that, that has come up for us in our work sessions. Unanticipated controversy or non-agenda items should not be allowed to dominate a well-planned meeting. Because the board requires the most accurate and complete information before decision-making, these issues will be referred to the superintendent and may be placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. So I, I think this would be a good one to talk about. If we're going to talk about board reports at meetings, this might be, this might be a good area. This addresses that in a way. So the rest of these, I wanted to point out number 24. BC and BCA are your, are, is, those are your policies for, well, and yeah, those are your, that's your policy for your, your operational meeting, your July meeting. This isn't in there. The draft board minutes in BDDG, this is not the same timeline as in your policy BDDG. And then 26, I'm not an attorney, but you have to have more than an audio recording of a meeting. You have to keep records for board meetings in perpetuity. And what that means right now is in written form. There's no other electronic way except PDF right now, which I don't know why that's considered a permanent storage form. I mean, it's not like PDFs aren't going to days out at some point. But, but there do need to be written meeting minutes. So I would consider that one as you're, as you're looking at this. So anyway, I can, I'll send this to you so that you've got these notes here too. But I just wanted to go through and show you that the vast majority of this aligns with your, with your policy. And there are some areas to change. So initial thoughts before we get started looking at this.
We'd just like to clarify that, yeah, we, even though it says audio, we, we do always post written minutes as well.
And I figured you did, I mean, I, I don't know, any district that doesn't, that's as well as recordings. You did, but we may want to, if, if part of our work together might be amending this.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Kristen?
Yeah.
So by showing this alignment with board policy already, is that saying that some of these are somewhat redundant and maybe they don't need to be in the protocol or?
Not necessarily. So, so the reason I do this is because sometimes there are questions like, where does this even come from? And, and really a board operating protocol is often a synthesis of a lot of your B section policies. You pull out things that are really important and you put them all together. That said, if you have a really long one like this, and there are things that are repeated, it's easier to take them out if they're already somewhere else. So, yeah, so, so not necessarily if something is really important and needs to be kept in the, in the front. But, but at least, you know, we'll know that these are covered other places if you choose to, to shorten this a little bit.
Cause as a new member, when I looked at these and saw 27, it's going, oh wow, this is a lot. How am I going to remember these with protocol and all that? So.
You won't.
Yeah, exactly. And I don't always have it handy. Okay. Is this the way I'm supposed to do this, you know?
Right. And when we start looking at this closely, I'm going to ask you to pick your top five. Not to say you'll end at five, but I think that's a good, this is where everybody always gets mad at me when I make you like little things down. But, um, but I'm going to ask you to really think about what are the key things that you feel like your board needs to focus on? And so, so we'll do that in a moment, but any other thoughts? And I can go back to page one if you want to look, or if you've got it in front of you. I don't know if you're all able to open it up. Any other thoughts just in general on the board operating protocol?
I have a question and it's, you said, going to try to drive us down to five. You'd also said earlier that 27 was an awful lot. So what is, is there such a thing as a average?
What I like to see is, can you fit this all on one page?
Yeah, like that.
And, and I, so there's not really an average. What I, what I will say is that you want to make sure that you capture the really important stuff. So it would limit you in the end to a number, you know, but the shorter, the better because the, the, the more concise something is, the more you will know it and use it. Like when you pull this open, like, do you want to read this? Probably not. It doesn't, the I will, right? So I, in my, the, the shorter and more focused these can be while still capturing the important stuff, the more they get used or the remember.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Any other thoughts in general?
I would just say that I'm not concerned that it's two pages. I, I think it's a great exercise to go through and probably eliminate some or shorten verbiage here and there. I see this as a way to capture, like you've said, Kristen, the important, the important items for us to kind of have top of mind as we engage with each other and with Troy. And it saves us from having to go into the policies because those are daunting to me. So I think a one to two page document that highlights what we really need to know and remember out of our policies is super valuable. And that's the work we're going to do together. So I'm not as concerned about having 27. I just really appreciate that this is a document that's useful.
Greg or Rod, do you have any, any thoughts you want to share at this point? All right. So I am going to, first of all, let me stop sharing for a second. Were you, I think I see, oh, I see a bunch of people in here. Wonderful. So I see Rod in here and I see Troy. I see somebody just named visiting snake, didn't give a name and whoever's moving their thing right now. And, and Teresa. Okay. Good. So the majority of you were able to get in. So we're seeing Greg, were you able to get into Mural?
I was not.
Okay. And then we know that John is not able to get in. Okay. So what I'm going to do, for those of you that can see this, you're looking at it right now. So what I'm going to do is pull us all, for those of you that can see, to the first page. I'm going to summon you here. And we can move on to second page in just a moment. Yeah, Greg, did you just not have the, the link or is there something that's preventing you from getting on?
I did put the link in the chat.
Oh Greg, you're muted. Sorry.
Sorry. So I go to the chat and then click on it?
Yeah, if you click that link, then that should open up to, to this mural site. And there you are.
Enter as a visitor?
Yeah. Okay. Okay. All right. So I pulled this all to, and John, are you able, do you have the, the operating protocol? Are you able to access it?
You know, Chris and I men, when Troy put it up on chat, I just tried to put it on and it's, now it's taken, I think. I'm halfway through. So Troy cannot open the page because the address is invalid. It is opening on, it was open on iPad and that was using the same thing Greg did. So something doesn't work and it's operator had space and timing probably, but.
So do you, do you have the, the operating protocol itself? Cause that's what we're going to use on this right now. Do you, okay.
I don't know what you mean.
Like the, the two-page school board operating protocol that we were just looking at.
Oh, 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 no, 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 I don't not.
You don't? Okay. If I emailed that to you or Troy emailed that to you or somebody did, would you be able to open it and look at it?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
But you gotta do it at my Yahoo account because I'm locked out of this account. I'm locked out of, I'm in a school district.
Okay. Troy, do you?
What's your Yahoo account, John?
John J at yahoo.com.
Okay, I'll, I'll send it to you.
Thank you so much. I haven't emailed a Yahoo account in a long time. All right. What I would like you to do is we're going to start with five and, and we're not going to end with five, but I would like each of you. Well, we'll start with a few minutes on the first page and then I'll move to the second page. Actually, let's do six. So you can pick, you can pick three from each page or whatever. But what I would like you to do is go through and write down the numbers of what you consider your top priorities. So I'm going to and I just wonder if I can lock this in place a little bit, maybe not. Okay. So just look at this. I'm going to set the timer for three, four minutes, four minutes for this page and, and mark down the numbers of what you consider top priorities.
I just sent that to you, John.
Thank you.
Troy, how long do we have overall tonight? And because I know you have something you want to talk to them about too.
Did we set two hours aside for this, Sherry? I actually don't think I put an end time on it, but I think it was two hours.
I think two hours is hard.
I imagine so.
90 minutes might be close to the limit.
But let's say it is anyway.
Okay. Has everybody had a chance to mark down a few? Okay. So now we're going to go to the second page. I'm going to bring you all with me. And we'll set this for three minutes instead of four and see if that's enough time. Whoops. Let me move that back. No, I will lock it so that doesn't have to happen.
When, when the participants mess with it, does it impact everybody?
Yeah. And so I locked it so that, so that you couldn't mess with it.
I was moving it around. Sorry. I didn't realize.
It's all right.
I didn't do, because I couldn't see it.
Competition.
And you can scroll in and out, you can move close, I mean, like if you just use like the, however you would zoom in and out, you can do that with your, with your mouse without moving anything around. Hi Rod, nice to see you.
I wasn't ignoring you. I was just finishing my dinner.
Oh, that's courteous of you. Like it's weird. I, I don't mind watching people eat in real life, but isn't it weird when Zoom, isn't that a different thing? I've learned that in Zoom world. Okay. All right. So presumably you've got, you've got some, some that you've marked down. And so now what we're going to do is I'm going to bring you all over here to look at this. Again, you can scroll in and out and I'm going to lock this so that it doesn't, I think this is locked. You can move back and forth by just like clicking on a blank space and, and doing that. Can you see what I'm doing this? Can you see me grabbing it and moving it back and forth? And then you can scroll in and scroll out. So what I would love for you to do is come over here and all you need to do to write in here is just click on one of these and start typing. You don't have to double click. You can just start typing. So I'd love for you all to put your top five in these stickies next to your name. And John, I will go ahead and type yours in. And don't move the stickies yet. Just, just type it. Go ahead. Question?
Can you slide over to the left? I've got a few extra and I need to eliminate a couple.
So did you want to see?
Yeah, I just can't quite, I can't quite see this stuff over to the left.
Oh, okay. Can you now?
No. I can do it myself.
So yeah, you can, I, I make you all follow me in the beginning and then you could move around. So John, why don't you go ahead and tell me what numbers you had?
You know, Chris, like I never got the thing from Troy.
Oh.
It's just part of the magic of T-Mobile.
John J at yahoo.com?
That's me. John J con con at yahoo.com.
No, I just put John J.
Oh, that would, my bad. I'm sorry. I needed to tell you the whole thing. This is how I keep from having to do real work. Well, it worked. You got it. Kristen, I bought, I bought 15 minutes.
I, I know. I hope you use it wisely. So John, if you're able to get that, take a few minutes, pick your top five and then you can tell me and I'll type them in.
Thank you. Ah ha, got it Troy. Thank you.
And then Troy, are you, okay, good. I can see your mouse moving. Give John a couple of minutes to come up with his. In fact, in the meantime, what I might do is move these over. So the next thing we're going to do, I'll just show you, while we are hanging out. We are going to, to try and align these, see, and see what we come up with. How many of you picked the same ones? Like what are the categories here? We're just going to use this, this field as an exercise. So I'm going to move these over. You can help me start categorizing them. Everybody remember your color. Okay. We'll get your color. All right. Here's what I'm going to set you all doing. One goes in each square. So you can, you can just click once and drag them around, right? So what I would like you all to do down here is, is start grouping them. So remember what your color was. You'll put one in each square, I'm doing this one, whoever's green, I'm, I'm just doing this to illustrate. And then if you've got the exact same one, like this pink four down here, you go under, like I would switch the fours to align with the green four, so we can see, and if you don't, you scroll out, you can see that if they don't align with anybody's, put it in a new column. So ideally, theoretically, the columns all have the same numbers in them. And if we have too many, just set them on the side or beneath here. So you all can align yours. And let me move this. Then I'm going to go back up and see if John was able to pick some priorities.
Oh, it might, like, can we make marks now? Oh, I didn't see how I'm making marks, I've been writing stuff down.
Well, that's good, that's good, you can tell me, because I don't think you were able to get into to.
Exactly, right.
Yeah, so why don't you tell me what numbers you picked?
Give me, give me one minute to.
No problem, no problem. Whoa, somebody figured out how to twist theirs around.
No I didn't, that was an accident. Now I can't straighten it up.
Oh, you put them up like that? Or are you moving those, Kristen?
I'm not moving them, so what I would, what I want you each, like, each of these people represents one of you with some extras at the bottom, right? So like, although this is, no, this is great, the way you're doing this is fine. You have, you have a better way to do it. So you're grouping them according to number, however that works.
I guess we are now.
Okay.
Who's the twisted number?
Troy's gray, he's fancy.
I, I'm not going to admit it, can't figure out how to round.
John, you have some?
Oh, there's the twist.
Okay, what do you got?
I got four, six, thirteen, fifteen, twenty-three.
Does match up anywhere? I'm just shocked how all over the map they are.
Which is part of this exercise, right? Like, it's interesting to see. Now, to be fair, you started out with a lot of them, right? If we only had 10 of the, there would be a lot more overlap. I'm going to move John's and then.
Oh, there was another thing, eighteen. Oh, nobody did a nineteen anyways.
So John, I'm going to read out, well, everybody, because you're not going to scroll back and forth between the things. What I'm going to do is tell you what's here.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, alright. So the one, one that looks to have, oh no, the one that looks at the most is number nine.
Okay.
And four of you chose number nine, which is, members will review essential facts, consider others' ideas, and then present personal opinions during board deliberations. But, once the board vote has been taken, support board decision regardless of how individuals voted. So that was the, that was the most popular one. Then we have three others that got three votes. So four is one of those, and that is, board members will treat each other, will treat other board members, the superintendent, staff, and the public with dignity and courtesy, and will provide an opportunity for all parties to be heard with due respect for their opinions. Then number fourteen also got three, and that is, board members will address issues, ask questions, and/or present reasoning during discussions at the meetings to provide complete transparency in district decision-making, so that the public understands how the board reached a particular decision. Twenty-three also got three. Board members will respect the privacy rights of individuals when dealing with confidential information gained through association with the district. Board members will keep information discussed in executive session confidential.
Number seventeen got three, it just didn't get put up here.
Oh, thank you, thank you Teresa. Okay. So this is one of the ones that, that we brought up earlier, so seventeen, unanticipated controversy or non-agenda items should not be allowed to dominate a well-planned meeting. Because this board requires the most accurate and complete information for decision-making, these issues will be referred to the superintendent and may be placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. So then we had two that got two, I can count, I, I can. The board, number fifteen, the board may establish academic and financial goals for the district and evaluate the superintendent's implementation of those goals. And eighteen, the board will adhere to the provisions of public meeting law and will minimize board member-to-board member conversation and/or deliberation about board business outside of posted meetings. And then we've got a few that have one.
Kristen, twenty-two also had two, I'll move it over.
Oh, am I not looking, oh, you're right, twenty-two, thank you.
Yeah.
And twenty-two, individual board members shall not give directives to any school administrator or employee publicly or privately. So those are all ones that got more, more than one. Let's, let's focus on those first, I'm just going to group the little singulars down, not to say they're not important at all. But we can take a look at those in a minute. So, so really though, out of twenty-seven of them, there was some, there were some pretty good, I mean, there was some, it wasn't as all over the places it might as. So what I'm going to show you now is, I'm going to share my screen. So you can keep looking at Mural if you want to, but now you'll also be able to see this. So I highlighted in blue the ones that we just mentioned. I'm going to take the yellow off, this is what we were discussing earlier. Because that makes it confusing. So there are those two. Is aligned with policy, one, one is, is not, but is a good practice. And on the second page, there were more. See that here. This is from BD. So there are, what, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight things here. What I, what I'd like to do, before we address the singulars, because we made, you know, twenty-one of them or something, is ask you, what do you consider themes here, looking at this? Knowing what you chose, and I can flip back to the, to the first page if you want me to, also. But are there, are there themes or pieces that need some work? These are important pieces to agree on. Like, at least two of you have said for each of these. What are your, what are your thoughts about what showed up? Do they, does, does a theme present itself, or what are you, what are you thinking?
Well, for me, the theme for me is that, as we look at all of those things, is that those things have happened in the past, and there's a reason why they're on that list.
Okay, so this, so Greg, to, to you, this might be more like we're addressing them as like a corrective action?
Uh, yeah, so, so some of those things happened, and so then the board got together and said, okay, and agreed upon, okay, we shouldn't do this, or where is it adding policy? So then we brought it to the forefront, so people knew what it was. Because there was times, because the policies are so deep, that people on the board weren't even sure what, for. So like Sherry was talking about this, I know it seems long being two pages, but it's much shorter than the hundreds of pages.
Very true.
Wow.
Um, Kristen, I see a, a few of them, the theme is board role as it relates to the superintendent and the rest of the employees of the school district, just that differentiation or more clear definition of authority and who we should be engaging with.
Any other thoughts? And just to remind you, there's a couple, couple on the first page as well. When you look at these, knowing that, that none of you chose all of these. So the other piece I want to point out is that number nine was chosen by almost everyone. First of all, do you disagree, do any of you disagree with any of these being important? And I'll flip back to the one with most of them on it. Would anybody disagree with these being priorities?
I don't, I don't know, I could disagree with the history that Greg is laying out here. Just because I, I, I had, I had thought, sitting here, I thought, man, we've got some pretty mite-stuff here. And I thought I would be looking at in this, I would be looking at more of thematic or this is how a board runs, and these are things that you need to be careful of, as opposed to the comments, not common sense, common meeting practice of, don't get off topic. If you're going to get off topic, send another agenda item for another meeting. But because only half of the board is experienced, and the other half two years or less experience on the board usually, then it's, it's not possible for me to say that something is invaluable or less valuable. I think it's probable that I would be able to, like, take this and say there are some major headings here and break out, work with superintendent, work with staff, setting goals, something like that. But I don't, it, your, your way of just asking that question, I didn't see how I could come up with a, no, this doesn't work.
That's fair.
I, I think Greg was, I, I didn't even really realize it, but that's really spot on, that it's each one of these things, or, you know, a couple here and a couple there, they're, they were very, I'll call it reactionary to, to some specific situation. I mean, at least half of them, I can see exactly, you know, where they came from. So it, it may need to be completely revisited so that it's, so it's not like that. And I'm not saying these things that are on here aren't, aren't good things and good practices, but they're, you know, it's this specific thing, and this specific thing, and this specific thing, as opposed to sort of a holistic view of the board's, you know, you know, this stuff.
And what Rod is saying, I think makes a lot of sense, with a board's maturing and a board's perception and the activities that I've been in with the board over the time I've been here with very few exceptions. Everything, all these have always been taken care of, and so you go, well, we're already running within these boundaries, and so maybe we shouldn't have all of the markers that we've got. Maybe we can have just a few guideposts and it runs that way.
But we didn't always fall within the boundaries where we should have, and that's.
That's right.
Why we put them in here.
Right, but, but with practice and with history, it seems to me that with very few exceptions, we've been there.
And with some of these things, as, as Teresa pointed out earlier, you know, that they are accounted for in policy, not that everybody always wants to go digging through policy unless you're me, which I just do. But, but the other piece is, some of them are just in law, right? So a lot of these are technical in nature.
Yes.
Executive session stuff, you know, like, I mean, if, if you were in a situation where you had a board member or two that was, you know, going around talking about executive session, outside of executive session, which I'm working with the board right now, where that is reality, that may be a very timely thing to have in board operating agreement. That said, you're covered whether or not that's in there, because, right? So, so I think it also is helpful to look at what is technical in nature and what is adaptive. And, and the adaptive pieces tend to not necessarily be covered somewhere else, or the behavioral, or the, you know, how do you make this yours? What is your board culture? Whereas, you know, if you feel like, and so I think, I think Greg's point for your situation is great, that if these were originally developed as a response and more of a corrective action, maybe in some cases you are still there, and maybe in some cases you're not. And so what, what doesn't need to be restated anymore? And I wonder if that is where you feel like you've gotten, highlighting these as the important pieces? Are we getting away from the more technical pieces and toward the more behavioral board culture, this is how we act, kinds of things? And I want to talk about, and I don't know, like, I can't remember what was next on the agenda, I feel like there was something else, it was about communication that, that was going to be maybe led by Sherry, and so I want to give you the opportunity to do that. But I want to highlight number nine, because the majority of you chose that. In that, members will review essential facts, consider others' ideas, and then support the will of the board once a decision has been made. And, and because that came up so often, I, my question to you is, is that something that's currently happening that you just want to see continue to be memorialized in writing? Or is that something you need to work on?
I think it's, I would say it's a little bit of both. I, just from my perspective, this is really important, and this is one of like the foundational ways to operate as a healthy board, is once the decision's made, you have to get on board and support that decision, even if you personally disagree with it. And I've seen, I've seen a few instances, I'd say in the last, I don't know, six months or so, where that we seem to be maybe losing ground on that a little bit. So I think we've done well with this, and it's, I feel this is really valuable to keep on this board protocol as a reminder that this is one of the keys of how we need to operate as a board. So that's kind of where my thought is on it.
Other thoughts on that one? Two, this is one of those pieces that is sometimes hard to understand right away. Like, oh, if I vote no, I'm not allowed to say I voted no. Like, for, like a new board member, this idea can be a little, can require some explanation. And so, to the extent that your board operating protocol also be an onboarding tool and part of your communication to new board members in getting them accustomed to, you know, here are our expectations for each other, that is also an important piece to lay out, because there's a whole conversation around what does it mean to support the will of the board, even if I individually disagreed? That's not something that's easily read and understood without some context to that. So so I think that, you know, that, that is one of those, that's one of those adaptive behavioral features that is less technical in nature. But really important to keep the board culture healthy.
I would really agree with you, Kristen, being one of the newer, new board members, there are certain things that really need to be clear as to what we can and can't do when we're communicating. when we're communicating information or asking questions. I just think it's real important. And I felt like most of these are the ones that were down. I, I had printed up these for myself, you know, so I had them handy and I was highlighting. And I would say a majority of these I had at least highlighted on here. And then when I narrowed it down to five, I had to eliminate, you know, some of them, but majority of these that other people chose, I had probably highlighted right at the beginning, because as a new member, it's like, I need to be reminded of this.
Couldn't agree more. Just wow. Way, way, way deep at first with how, I'm not a representative, I can't talk to people. People can talk to me. I don't, I don't make it I don't understand this at all. But if I did, but having, if I'd had this list or knew how to refer to it, I, although I started in nineteen, so I'm sure we had one then too. That would have been very, I would have kept that as my face piece on how to conduct myself and, and how to conduct as a board. That was, this has been very helpful.
This is like one of the most probably unpolitical positions, really, in that, you know, politicians can get out there and they can say how they feel about different things and
Yep.
Not so as a school board member so much, so.
That is, that is always my, always my analogy is that, you know, and I say, and maybe I've said this to you all before, I say this to almost everybody. Nobody knows what a board, what a school board does, and neither did you until you got on the board. Because most people think of school board members like they think of legislators, like individual legislators who run on a platform to advance an agenda. They can, you know, talk poorly about their colleagues and, you know, not undermine the whole system to an extent. But, but that's not how a board of, of directors for a school district functions, right? So it's, so I, I think that, I mean, that, that's what I say all the time, Teresa.
Yeah. I mean, I've had people come to me and say things, and all I can say is, well, I cannot comment on that, but I sure appreciate you sharing your thoughts with me along that line, so.
So what if I, I want to, I want to make sure that you get everything covered on your agenda that you want to. What if I took these highlighted pieces, stuck them all together, and sent this back to you along with the, the whole thing, which is also aligned to policy, so you can make some changes that you may need to make for the pieces that are not either aligned to policy, or that you could consider removing at some point with the, the areas of priority that you've determined highlighted. And, and of course, I'll send you the notes from tonight so that you can also discuss, you know, maybe those, those little individual pieces. I think the last thing I would ask on this is that, is there anything missing that you felt very strongly about as an individual that didn't make it on this list, that you would want to say, you know, this is also a big priority I don't want to miss out on?
Can you slide back up to the top page?
Sure.
I think they were both good.
So if there's, if there's nothing feels egregious that it's missing, I think that's what I'll, what I'll do is just separate these from the others, put them at the top, send me the rest of it also. I'm, I'm not eliminating anything for you, I promise. But then you can look at what could we remove, maybe, or what is no longer really important? What is technical? And what is board culture? What is covered somewhere else? And, and you know, what may, what, what could we reference later? And what isn't? And then I would, I mean, if you want, I can, I can put recommendations in there. I can also just give it back to you as with the work that you've done. But then I think the goal would be to adopt it, re-adopt it at some point. Any changes that you would make. And I would say soon.
I think that's wonderful.
And Kristen, I heard you say you're willing to make recommendations here and there, and I would love that. As one member of the board, I think that would be helpful, but.
So I'm happy just to, oh, thank you. And I, so I'm happy just to, you know, send you a draft that has, you know, rearrange it with some recommendations. And I can, I can probably get that to you by the end of the week, and then whenever you have your next meeting, maybe you can put that on the agenda to look at it.
Do we want to talk about peeling some off the bottom of this? I know these are the ones that kind of rose up to the top, but I, and maybe the list does need to stay long like it is. I, I heard people speak in both directions. But maybe there's some that we just don't need to have on there anymore.
Yeah, Rod, I, I was thinking that anything that doesn't align or is in contradiction with, I think maybe, Kristen, if you could even put those at the very, very bottom, because those would be, to me, the first ones that could go.
Yeah, certainly if it's in contradiction, we either need to get it in alignment and still have it on here, or toss it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm happy to like, sort of, you know, move things around and categorize this, you know, putting your priorities at the top, then maybe some of the other stuff underneath, and then, and then any of my recommendations that you can take or leave for removal. So that you can look at it like that next time you go to look at it. Removal or change. Okay, that sound good?
Yes.
Nice job.
Sounds great.
All right, I'm going to stop sharing. Next on the list. Make sure I save this.
So I, I added board member communications on our agenda tonight, just because we, just with everything that's been going on, we've been hearing from more and more people who are emailing us as a board or individual board members, and we, many of us, including myself, just don't feel confident in how to respond, or if to respond. So the examples are if a community member sends an email to Troy and copies all the board, do we just assume Troy's going to respond and leave it at that, or should we respond individually? And if, I guess if an individual, you know, contacts the whole board, should the whole board individually respond, or should it be the board chair's responsibility, or that's, that's why I added this, because I, I just don't have confidence. And maybe I'm alone there, but I wanted to have
With you, Sherry.
And I, I'd like to see if possible, is there a, is there a place where responses to the written correspondence is put so that I could see when somebody sent in something, I could take a look within a week or whatever, ten days, however long it takes to respond, and see what the response was, because I think I'm usually getting a CC of it, but when I'm shooting around on the site, I would like to be able to, when I'm doing that kind of work, I'd like to be able to get to that at that point.
And I, I could share just what current practice is, and
Yeah.
And it really does, it really does depend on who it's sent to, of course. You know, if it's sent to me and the board's copied, I always respond and I always reply all, so I always respond with all the board members copied. And there's, and I've actually, there's been so many of them, so many comments coming in, that I've even started copying the board on some of them that just come directly to me, because I think it's important that the board just has a clear understanding of what kind of feedback we're getting from the community or concerns we're getting. When it's directed to the board and I'm copied on it, it's a little different, because, because I don't feel like, I, I don't feel like it was sent directly to me. And I can't remember Sherry right offhand, but maybe you and I have communicated and we've decided on which one of us was going to respond, and then respond all.
Yeah, that's happened. I don't know how consistently, but yes, I know that's happened.
And I know John has, John has gotten a lot of feedback from community, and he's asked, or gotten a lot of direct emails from community members or letters. And he wasn't sure how to respond, and, and sometimes I can't remember who all, but there have been a couple of times when board members have asked, should I respond, or should I not? And I think it's important, this is my perspective. I think it's important that if a board member gets a comment from, or a request, or an email from a community member, that you do respond. And obviously, you do, you don't have an opinion or solve the problem, but you, they just need to know. I think it's important that they know they were heard. And, and, and that, that you acknowledge their, their concerns, and you'll keep it under consideration, or take it to the board if it's something very serious. But I think just the acknowledging that it was received is most important.
I sort of thought that there was a policy that instructed us to not do that. Am I not thinking right?
I was
Individually responding to emails?
I, I don't, I mean, I can, I see what you're saying, is doing it to say, acknowledge that we received the information? Yeah.
Responding to their question, or?
Or you can't, you can't address their question, but you can certainly respond to them, acknowledge that you received it.
You received it.
Yeah.
And I, and Greg, I was wondering that too, so I was looking at policies while, while you were chatting, just to see if I could find anything about that. I, and I, and I couldn't. The closest thing where I started was in your policy BCB, which is about board officers, and so it talks about the role of the speaker as spokesperson, which sometimes there will be language in there about like responding to emails on behalf of the board. But that's not in here. So, so to the best of my knowledge and searching, you don't have anything about emails, about responding. Or nothing that prohibits you from acknowledging.
I don't, I don't, I haven't seen it as, I, I don't know, I haven't seen it as a problem. I don't, I don't know that I've ever responded to any of those. I mean, maybe once or twice, maybe. But I, but I think I want to make sure that I have that option to do that if, if, if I feel the need to.
Yeah, and I would say, oh, go ahead. Yeah, and Rod, I think the reason I wanted to talk about it tonight is just so we all have a shared understanding of how we are individually handling this. And if we agree that maybe there are some norms for all of us to follow, if, if we reach agreement on that. So it, it could be that when Troy is sent an email and we're copied, that we know that Troy's going to respond, and he's going to include us in the response, and there's, there's no expectation that we engage unless we want to individually. If the whole board is sent an email or a letter, and Troy's copied or not, I would think that they should get a response. And so as board chair, I feel it's definitely a responsibility to respond, at least to acknowledge it. And I don't, I can't remember, I don't think I'm consistently copying everyone. Sometimes I'll just send it individually. So I guess that's a question too. When we respond, should we copy the whole board? Or just send it individually? And I, again, I don't know what the answer is. And then if we do hear from individuals, just to ask directly, and there's a question or a concern, I think acknowledging that, and if it's a question that we can't answer, I think it's our responsibility to forward that to Troy, or to Troy, yeah, and say, you know, Troy, what do you think? And can we work on a response to this? Just to not leave people hanging. So that's where I'm thinking, but I don't. I don't know if I'm.
I think you should, I think the board chair should absolutely every time send a, I don't know if it's a pat, you know, it's a, a normal response, that's at very least an acknowledgement. And then I don't know how we handle if other board, you know, and I think any communication should be copied to all of the board members.
Okay. I think so too. I think it should just be whoever they sent it to, just reply all.
Yeah, and, and it's really just a question of if individual board members periodically, and I, and I'm not saying it should be a regular practice at all. I don't know if other board members have responded individually to people or not. But I, but I, again, I want to, I want to keep that option open to be able to do that. You know, if it's something that, or, you know, for whatever reason, it's something that I know about specifically, or, or whatever.
Yeah.
Copying the whole board. I mean, I'm not, it's not like, um.
Yeah, so that, so I think that sounds good. I think we, you know, let Troy take the lead if it's to Troy and we're copied. If the whole board's sent an email, definitely the board chair should take the lead on, on responding and reply all. And then from there, if, if someone reaches out to you individually, which has happened recently for a number of us, if you have confidence in responding individually to that person, and copying Troy on the response, maybe, that's great. Or if you want to confer with me or Troy before you reply, that would be good too.
And, and somehow or another, that response has to be logged or put in a record somewhere, so that it can be identified and followed up in the future. It's, say it's May of this coming year, and somebody wrote Greg a letter, and Greg responded, but didn't put a copy in the, in the folder or on file, and he doesn't run again, then how are we able to pick up from what he said to the person?
Yeah.
I believe he wouldn't say anything untoward, but we, we have to have that record.
One thing that we do, John, is the reason we require board members to use the school district emails, because it's that's always, that's always available.
No, that's a, thank you, Troy. That's, that does cover that, and I'm, I'm remiss. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not aware of the practice of logging all communications, but I could certainly ask around and see if that's something that is, is being done in any other districts.
Well.
Yeah, and, and I, I would say that just generally, since we're using our, as long as we're using our school district email, that becomes a permanent record, and search for that, you can find it later, even if you delete it, it, it becomes part of it's on the documentation that we can look up in, in the future, if we have to.
But even stuff that's not through those channels can still be part of the public record though, right?
Yeah, you need to be careful, because it has to be reproduced if it's asked for. And if you don't use the school district email, then that could open up your whole personal email to discovery, and that's
Right. Yeah, if you're texting back and forth and policy stuff or whatever.
Yeah. So that helps me. Thank you for this discussion. Does anybody have any other comments or observations or suggestions, or Kristen or Troy, is there anything that you want to recommend as we move forward?
No, I'd be happy to, to, you know, put together just a little list of those expectations that we talked about. I got, took the notes down, and I can come up with something to bring, bring back to the board.
Thank you.
That would be great.
Yep.
What are, can I ask, what are other board members doing when questions come in that are like addressed to the board, for example? Are you guys responding to them? Because I, I have, I haven't.
I have not either.
I, I haven't either. I call, I call Sherry and Troy in a panic and say, what do I do now? What do I do now?
Yeah.
And they take care of it for me.
I, I just say you're on your own, John.
You know, I don't know if I've been consistent, so that's why I wanted to bring it tonight. Yeah. I think I've been replying in general, but.
And so at least somebody is, is at least touching base with them. Okay.
Yeah. And I think part of my confusion was if it's sent to Troy and the board is copied, do we, is the expectation that we engage as well? And I, I would say no, I think that's Troy.
Yeah.
And it sounds like that's the good, good route to take.
However, if, if somebody has the board and Troy on the two line, I think that both board and Troy need to respond.
Yes, agreed. I, I agree. Whoever's in the two line is the, is the, is the first in line to respond. And if that's a combination, then that would be Troy and whoever on the board collaborating maybe on a response. Yeah, thank you, John. Yep, I agree. Well, that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry, for bringing that up.
All right, moving on to review board reports in general meeting.
So this is, this is something that, I don't have any presentational materials on this, but this is a conversation that got started. So this is, this is something that, I don't have any presentational materials on this, but this is a conversation that got started. And, and I don't know, I mean, I guess I'll just ask if, has there been any more conversation about board reports? Have you seen any board reports? I, I would love to see you all come to a decision about this, but I also know that we kind of left it in the middle last time. So, so first of all, has, have you, have you had any more of these or, you know, has something come up or what, what is, what has been the thinking since we last talked?
Nothing's come up. It's still on our regular agenda, board reports. And so I think what we, where we left it is to reach agreement. If we want to leave it on the agenda, which I think we were leaning toward yes, I, I think I've heard more voices say yes. And then if we do define kind of what's appropriate for sharing during the board report. And what we talked about, as you remember, Kristen, everyone was if the board had, if we attended a, a conference or a learning event, or if we engaged with the community on behalf of the board to report back that way and leave it with specific board business that just makes sense to share back with the board.
And yeah, and, and just as a, as a, as a reminder about, you know, some of the, the, the ways that this can go sideways. You know, there, I, I know that there are attorneys out there that would say, don't put anything like this on your agenda because it gives an opportunity for things to, to start being discussed that were never on the agenda. That said, that's sort of one end of the recommendation spectrum, right? I, I think my recommendation would be for, for your own protection and for also for your own sense of control over your own meeting is, is to do that. If you're going to have board reports, it is about, you know, what you engaged in as a board member over the course of the last two weeks or, or, you know, like if you, if you attended a training, if you attended a meeting, if you attended, you know, or, or were involved in something, if you, you know, became aware of something happening somewhere, I mean, that like, that, that was more of an announcement than up for discussion. Because there is a difference between future agenda items and what should go on the, on a future agenda and something that like, this is just an announcement.
Well, and, and hearing you say that, Kristen, would it make sense to consider removing the board report as a placeholder on the agenda? And if a board member has something like that to announce, could that just be part of the announcements part of the meeting? Cause there is that.
If you've already got announcements, yeah. The board could, could, right. I mean, who, whose agenda item is that usually? Is that Troy or who?
I think another way to do it would just be to just say there could be no discussion on a board report. Right? That it's for whoever's presenting the board report, it's their opportunity to present on whatever they're, they went out and seen or whatever. And then there's no discussion, there's no input at all from anybody else, board member or community members. And it, it gets away from at least the, what you were calling the, the far end of the extreme.
And, and another alternative, if, if we're going to consider removing it, would be if someone does want to report out, it can be asked to be an agenda item in the discussion. So it can just be a discussion item on the agenda specific. But I don't know. We've got options.
You do have options. I think, you know, the, the thing that, that we talked about last time was really, if you're going to keep it, really framing it carefully. Because, I mean, like, like I have said to you before, you know, it's, it's our, it is, it's our job to try and keep you out of trouble. And so often we think of some worst case scenarios, but we also see worst case scenarios. So they're not always that far fetched. I mean, let's say in the future, at some point you had a board member and, and if the rule was only, you can bring up whatever you want, there's just no discussion. I mean, somebody could say, so my presentation is about bringing corporal punishment back into school. You know, and, and I mean, like, the, like you couldn't control necessarily for something that is A, not the board's job and B, illegal. You know, again, I'm thinking of things on the extreme because they illustrate the point better. But, but I, but I, also I think that, that if you were to define it as district related or, you know, event related, school related announcements, and maybe even just putting it under that other category of announcements is enough of a, of a change in definition that that helps guide what that's supposed to be. My over, you know, my umbrella of caution is just that you, you, even if something is not discussed, you want to make sure that whatever you're announcing is, is germane to the work of the board, right? That, that it's, you know, you went in your board capacity to go see something or you learned something in your board capacity. And, and that it's not outside of your role, that you're not introducing new agenda items, whether or not they're discussed and that it is related to your role as a board member. So, so maybe framing it under announcements helps that. But I, I do agree that, that, I mean, not agree, I, I would recommend that there be some definition about what those announcements are about.
I, I would still favor keeping it as board reports right along with the administrator reports. And just put whatever restrictions we need to put on them. So that we don't, I mean, all we need to do is make sure that we don't get in trouble. Right? I mean, that's, that's really all we need to do.
Other thoughts on this? What do you all think?
I'm comfortable with it either way. I think it works either way for me. So.
And I assume that if there is a board member that wants to say something under board reports, that they also have to gotten that on the agenda, you know, before the meeting, you know, the same time that anybody else would have to get anything on the agenda. I don't know if it was like the Wednesday before the meeting or something like that. So if you have a topic that they're going to be reporting on, and they wanted to do corporal punishment, we would say, no, we're not doing that one, you know?
So do the, I, I think that's key. Do those, do your reports have to be approved or is it, sorry, I have a cough drop in. Is it just part of the agenda and then whoever's got something talks at that time?
The latter.
Yeah.
What was that? I missed it. Sorry, Rod.
The latter.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So Teresa, normally for board reports, and I, and I think we can change it, but how, how we've handled it before, just an opportunity for, for a board member to share something for the good of the board to hear that they have experienced in their, you know, board, board member capacity since the last meeting. Like, like we said, they went to a community meeting on, you know, or they went to a conference or whatever. And we haven't had to, they're not presenting anything. They're just sharing information. So we haven't had to have that go through approval, anybody to get.
Okay.
Approval or review or anything.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that is certainly another option. You could consider doing that. You know, there, there, there are many options to frame this. Consider that, you know, it may be, maybe board reports, you, you do less definition, but there is some sort of, you know, agenda approval process. Or you do more definition and just, everybody's just going to go along with that definition. And I wonder, where is the place that this is defined? Because I wonder if this is something potentially for your board operating agreement or, I mean, it's not a policy. So I'm, I'm trying to think of where, where else it might go, but whatever guardrails you might put around this, that might, that might be something to add in, because, because at, at least in two sessions that I've been in, this has been a priority topic. So I wonder if it's a, if it's a priority thought exercise too, and something that you would want to keep top of mind, especially as new board members come on. So I wonder if, if putting something down so that, you know, if there are questions about how this goes, there's something to refer to. And having that in your board operating agree, that might be the best place for it.
I would like to remind the board that, and I didn't do the, I didn't do the analysis, but I don't think that a board has provided, board members are repi- provided a report more than twice in the last three years.
Yeah. It's pretty rare.
Yeah, very rare. So it'd be pretty easy to put something on the agenda in advance if, if a board member needed to do that.
Yeah. So it sounds like from what I'm hearing, at least we, we've got options, but the two that come to mind for me are eliminate the board report from our agenda. And if a board member wants to have a discussion item, get it on the agenda for the meeting. Or two, leave the board member reports on the agenda and use the board operating protocols that we're currently updating to define what that means and what's appropriate to share during that board report part of the agenda.
And that still gives board members an option. If there is something that is less announcement and more discussion, then you still go through the same process of, of requesting that something be on the agenda.
Yes. And I think if we, if we're able to define that pretty clearly in the board operating protocol, people would realize, oh, this is more than just a report. I think I want to have this on the agenda. And then they go through that process. I like that idea, but what do you all think?
Kristen, we have at the beginning of our agendas, another item is seldom ever used as announcements. Would it, would it be, just a thought, Sherry, I just thought of it, but would it be, and the rest of board members? You know, maybe that would be a place where if a board member had visited a school or gone to a workshop or wanted to share during announcements? I, I'm just a thought.
I think that makes a lot more sense because it's really just like when I've done the school visitors, I'm, it's just talking about the, that it happened. If we needed to get into a report of how it went and there was further stuff, that would be an actual report. A board member report. So I think now it works real good in an announcement.
And then we could do the same thing, leave announcements and then maybe in our board protocol, flush that out a little bit if we choose to do so. What, what, what could we use the announcements for? And remove the board reports, because then if somebody really wants to do an in-depth discussion or report, that can be an agenda item. For the meeting. I like that approach as well.
You want me to try and, well, depending on how the rest of you feel about it, I would be happy to just throw in some language based on your discussion tonight into the, into the board operating protocol that I'm going to send back to you for, as a starting point. Obviously you could do with it whatever you wanted, but it would be addressed in there and then you could.
Well, I, I like having a standing agenda item for the board members. I, I think it's appropriate. I think it hasn't been troublesome in the past. And like Troy said, we've used it all of two times in the last three years. So I don't really see the, the need for a big change to it. I think there should be a, a spot for board members to announce on whatever is board related that they want to announce on without it having to go through an agenda item.
Would you agree, Rod, that, that, that word thing may need some definition though?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay. Okay.
I think you're right, Chris. And I think maybe the protocol, that's where, maybe that's where it is.
So I'm adding that. I'm just putting that at the bottom of, of my draft of the protocol to add in some language about what that, what that looks like. The difference between like, you know, wanting a discussion on an agenda item and having something for the board report section. And I'll put there and then you all can take that, modify it. That sounds like, that sounds like a, at least a tentative process agreement, concept agreement. What do you think?
I like it.
Great.
Anything else on, anything else on 2.3, everyone? Kristen, do you have any looming questions that we can answer to help you?
No.
That language? Okay.
I don't, I don't think so. I think I, I'm pretty clear from what you, what you've talked about. I think we got agreement and, and I'll just, I'll work on that this week and get that back to you and and adopt it from there.
Thank you. So moving on, before we move on to 2.4, because I don't think this is going to be a quick discussion. Can we take, take five, 10 minute break and then come back? Is anybody opposed to that?
No.
Yeah. And we'll probably take the whole half hour that we have left.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that? I just need a quick break. Thank you, Kristen. So maybe just come back at maybe five minutes, so 8:02.
Okay. Sounds good.
All right. Thank you.
Bye, everybody. Thank you.
Thanks, Kristen.
Thank you, Kristen.
How's it going, Troy?
Good. We're still working on interpreting the latest announcement and executive order.
Always new news coming at you.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But I think, I think we're in pretty good shape. At least as far as I can tell.
Yeah. Good. Good, good, good.
Are you going to want me to share anything on the screen? I don't know if everyone will be able to access.
Yeah, let's see. I mean, maybe your contract. We'll see. We'll see if people have it, but.
I'll open it up before I can share it if I need to, but I have, I just have. I'll open it up before I can share it if I need to, but I have, I just have a real short statement to open it up with, if you don't mind.
Of course.
We'll see if I can figure out where I put it.
Are you familiar with Clackamas County's political stuff of the, of the week, weekend?
No.
Are you familiar with Tudy Smith?
I remember she was a legislator and I met her my very first year I was in.
She was a legislator. She was a commissioner in Clackamas County for a bit. She lives in Malala. And anyway, she, she got elected as our new board chair starting in January and she, her Facebook post said she's gonna host Thanksgiving and with her family and friends. And, and it's, you know, that everybody has their personal stance on.
Oh, yeah.
It's just so interesting because she actually got interviewed by Tucker Carlson on Fox News. I mean, she's made national headlines. It's quite exciting to be an employee of Clackamas County and see all the media attention.
I saw that too. I was like, wow.
Yeah, yeah, interesting. And I've met Tudy a couple of times. She's, she's funny. But yeah.
I don't want to make any of you feel bad, but it doesn't look like we had any visitors tonight from the community.
I know. That's
That's because they're all stacking up for tomorrow's meeting.
For tomorrow?
For the listening session.
Oh.
That's a, that's a little different. That's, that's what was our old PAC meeting. It used to be the PAC meeting. That's, that's, it's, it'll be, all be in Spanish. So if you listen in, you'll have to listen really close.
I'll, I'll be able to pick up some of it.
They could be just zoomed out with other kids on Zoom and trying to help kids and, yeah.
Yes.
We figured out how to, I, I hope they'll have it ready by tomorrow night, but we figured out how to translate or, or interpret on the side during the same meeting.
Oh.
So basically, your Spanish speakers pull out into a, into a what do you call this, outside group?
Breakout room or?
Breakout room, yeah. So the Spanish speakers will be able to watch the presentation, but hear it in Spanish.
Oh, very good.
Yeah. That's awesome.
That's nice.
Thank you.
All right, we're all back. So Troy, take it, take it.
So I sent, Sherry asked me to send my contract and earlier today, and I, so I sent that in email. I can also pull it up here if you'd like me to. And then I also put, put in there a proposal for an amendment to the, the contract as a method of going through this process as an option. Of course, it's the board's decision. But I know that the last meeting there was, you know, you, you all kind of shared your thoughts on what you thought about the process of you know, your superintendent double dipping, I guess, if you want to say it that way. And I thought, you know, I think it's real important that that as we go through this process, process, I give you just a little bit of a better idea of what it's like in our local community or in our surrounding communities. So right, right now, within 30 miles of our own district, we have 10 superintendents are in the same situation. They're currently working as retired superintendents. And that's just off the top of my head. I didn't reach out to anybody. That's only a superintendent. There's a lot more other administrators that are currently doing the same thing and teachers. But you know, just an example, Dallas, CIO, North Marion, Salem, Kaiser, Yamhill, Carlton, Harrisburg, the ESD, Philomos, St. Paul, Beaverton, they're all retired superintendents that are working back. There is a savings to the districts of 6% of the payroll costs. Because you're no longer paying into the employees per s account. But I think it's most important that the board, for the sake of our district, you know, continues to discuss my performance, my vision and my direction that I'm taking the district in, you know, rather than worrying about how it impacts me financially, if you will. So, but really all I have to say, I mean, there's, Sherry did a good job, I think, of explaining the options at the last board meeting, but the way I proposed it for you to consider or discuss is through an addendum to the current contract. Not an addendum, an amendment to the current contract.
Thanks, Troy. So what, what do any of you have to say about, about our decision and Troy's request and, and all?
The thing that, go ahead.
John, you want to go?
Yeah, the thing that stands out to me is I don't see any for getting through the year without Troy. I think that's, that's gotta be a given.
I agree.
I agree too.
Yeah.
Rod, you want to say something?
Go ahead.
No, go, no, it's fine. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, the, the only thing for me was that I obviously don't know much about the double dipping thing. So I tried to pull some stuff up on the internet. And one of the first things that came up was the situation in the Salem Kaiser School District. And I don't think there was an argument about the person that they put into that position. I think people were upset with the process. So my only recommendation is that we strongly consider the process that we do this in, that we don't just, because I think they were complaining that one day the person resigned and the next day they hired the person and there was no, no like posting positions, no public input, none of those things occurred. So people were upset, not, not that it was the wrong person, but with the process didn't seem appropriate. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. And I'm going to add, so Troy, this, this won't surprise you because you and I have talked one-on-one about this. So I'm, I'm in agreement that I think my suggestion personally, an individual board member, is that we it would be silly of us to not keep Troy on, doing a great job performance-wise. And we just need to decide as a board how that's going to look. And Greg, to your point, the process is going to be important, be transparent. Make sure people know we're open to their opinions and their feedback on the process. I have discomfort when we treat an administrator a lot differently than we treat the rest of the school district employees. And I know that superintendents are in a unique position. You have the pleasure of having five supervisors, which I don't envy you for. And so we as a board have all the authority to do how, to do this, how we want to do it and how we all decide and agree to do it. So I just want to have very transparent discussions, raise the issues. And, you know, from my perspective, I work in HR and I know that, I know that retirees get hired back all the time. Normally, from what I see, we rehire back retirees to get us through the transition to hire someone new. And so my, I am concerned about agreeing to three years out, out of the gate. I, I have concerns about that. And so I just want that to, I just wanted to say that. And, you know, the state of Oregon has decided they will not hire back retirees. Clackamas County limits it to six months. The school district with our policy, we do limit how, how long we hire back a retiree without going through recruitment for them to stay on beyond a certain period of time. So again, I just want to have the discussion, make sure that we are acknowledging that if we do decide to keep Troy on beyond the, the remainder of the school year, that we'll be treating him differently than, than what our policy states, which is fine. We have, we have the authority to do that. Hiring a new superintendent's a huge deal. I don't look forward to it. I think Troy's wonderful and I want to keep him on. I'm just not comfortable tonight saying that I would agree to, to the three-year commitment at this time.
And Troy, if I remember right, when you found out that they, they were no longer, retirees were no longer limited to just, you know, a certain amount of hours. Because you thought that might be a possibility with a retiring teacher bringing them back, but it would only be a year-to-year contract. Like they, you could bring him back one year. And then if you decided again, you would have to, I don't know, re-interview or reissue that yearly contract. So whatever we would decide, I would assume that would apply to that in that way too, like not, yes, we're going to keep Troy for three years, but maybe we'll do one more year.
Well, that's, that's, that's the way our current policy reads. So, and what I think what Sherry is referring to is that she believes that that policy applies to all employees, including the superintendent.
Okay.
No.
No, okay.
No, I don't. But I, no, that, that policy applies to all the employees, but not superintendent. And I just want to say that out loud.
Okay.
And I am always of the thought that we should treat every employee as equitably as we can in our district, no matter at what level they are. So I am just of the mindset that we need to be thoughtful about making decisions that are different than the way other school district employees experience employment at, at the school district. So I guess that, hopefully that helps clarify that a little bit.
Yep, that's clear.
Yeah. Well, yeah, current policy says that if, if you have a mid-year retirement, you're automatically able to complete the remainder of the year. And then it's a one-year, on a one-year-to-year basis.
The problem is that your, your contract is a little bit different though, right?
Yeah.
But I, I think in this situation, we can, we can make his contract whatever we want, right? We, we, the five of us can write that contract and he can sign it or not sign it.
I'm basically, well, I'm an at-will employee. I mean, I mean, currently it's written on a 60-day, you know, notice. So that's not written in any other contracts.
And Sherry, I think to, to your point about the one-year versus three-year, I'm in the exact same position. It would be completely foolish of us to, to let Troy go for the remainder of this school year. But I think we need to make sure, like Greg pointed out, for the longer-term stuff, that we have whatever's the right process in place. And I'm hoping at least tonight, we can come up with what that process is or the timeline or whatever.
Yeah.
The only timeline you're concretely, concretely bound to, and that's not a proper word probably, is that you have to make a decision before December 31st.
For the remainder of this school year.
For anything, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and from what we've said so far, I think it was Greg that brought it up, the piece about treating every, having contracts be the same. And then Troy's piece about right now contracts are finished regardless of, at, at the end of the school year regardless. That if we, if we try to pull that together, it seems that we have a real, what I think is a very good solution, and that is that we get the, the rest of this year, but we also get one year in addition. And that seems to me to be a, a ver- a more prudent way to attack this, to, to solve this right now.
I would hope, I would hope that that's the minimum. And, and the reason I say that is because from my perspective and from the board's perspective, if you don't have something posted by, you know, at the very mid-February, you've already missed it. And that's the same way for me applying for someone else, somewhere else. So you know, if the board turns around and agrees only to hire me through the end of the school year, I'm going to be radically, really, really quick at looking for a job because I can't, I don't want to go, you know, July 1st and not have a job. So same thing for the board though.
Yeah.
Troy, we thought you were with us no matter what. Come on.
I am, as long as you're paying me.
I guess I also would like to find some way that we get community input or staff, you know, just, we have our perspective and I trust our perspective, but I feel like we have a whole community and a whole school district to look at too, just, you know, perspective-wise, but I don't know if that's a possibility or.
Well, we can do whatever we want.
Yeah, I think certainly for longer term, I, I'd like to, I would like to do, I would like to do that. Whether that's, whether we can do that before December or not, I don't know.
Yeah, and, and one, one of my thoughts on all this and, and it's, I think it's in line with what I'm hearing. So an idea, I agree with John. I, I was coming in tonight thinking that it, it is, it makes sense to agree to keep Troy for the remainder of this school year and next school year. And then as a board, that would give us time to really figure out where we want to land by October, November of next year. Do we want to hire a new superintendent for the following year or not? And that would allow us time to do the, the the process of getting input from, you know, stake key stakeholders, community members and whatnot. And if we do decide that we want to go out and hire a new superintendent, we would have Troy, you know, through the end of that school year to help with your transition, to help plan. It would just give us more time. Now is not a great time to hire a superintendent. I can't imagine, I can't imagine that, I mean, if, if we let Troy go, he'll be snagged pretty quickly is my guess. So that, that's my thought.
And the further you plan ahead, I mean, you're like we're doing with Gail's position. We're set up really ideally with Gail's position because you know, she's retiring at the same time, but she wants to go to halftime. So we're able to keep her on halftime for the remainder of the year while we hire someone to work alongside her. And, you know, I would suggest, you know, the board consider when they do decide to go out to hire a new superintendent, that they try to hire him by March 1st or somewhere in that neighborhood so that there is an overlap. You know, just because of institutional knowledge.
Exactly.
Really hard to make that transfer, even if everything's documented. You know, it's, it's just a transfer for a small school district because there is not a large team that's behind me that can say, oh, this is how we've done in the past. Because those positions could change as well.
Hey, hey, Troy, when, I just want to make sure that I'm talking the same language as everybody. When we talk about like through the end of this school year or through the end of next school year, when does your, how long does your contract go?
My contract's a three-year contract and it renews every year. So it's a, it's a, it's, it's a rotating three-year. So it's, it's a three-year contract all the time. And the board renews it each year. So it's, you know, until you don't renew it, it's always a three-year contract.
Yeah, and, and I would, I would say that with, with the, with the retirement, because Troy has given notice that he's retiring, we, that opens us up to a brand-new contract as of January 1 with any language we want. We could agree to Troy's addendum or start from scratch on the contract. We'll you know, or edit it to, to however we, we feel it's best. And another thought on the whole, once we do onboard a new superintendent, if we are thoughtful and we take our time, I'm curious if there is any internal interest and it would allow for a year of, of development and work focused. If, if we have an administrator who's interested in Troy's position, which I don't know that we do, but it would allow them a year to become somewhat more competitive for his role if they want to, to compete for it. So it's another thought as well.
Additionally, it allows Troy the courtesy of not having to jump through hoops to look for another job that he can, he can make a plan for how that goes or make a plan for, he really intends to continue to compete for two more years or whatever here. But that additional year, so 18 months essentially from this from December 31st is what we're, what I'm, I'm excited about.
Is that when superintendent's move is at the end of the school year?
Yeah, it's, yeah, contracts are July 1 to June 30. Same as the fiscal year, yeah.
Okay.
So the current contract that is going to be terminated because of the resignation, that contract was signed July 2020 and was scheduled to end That contract was signed July twenty twenty and was scheduled to end twenty twenty-three.
Correct.
In July.
Yeah.
Correct. So Troy, um, just out of curiosity, cause Gil, I know she's she's not superintendent, but same kind of situation. Uh, she resigned, retired, and then she's coming back on. Was that position? Uh, posted? Also?
Well.
It was not posted and rehired.
It were, it's, we're not rehiring. Uh, she's, well, yeah, we're rehiring her. Uh, as halftime, keeping her on as halftime, but we're reposting, we're posting her position and she's gonna stay on for halftime as a transition.
Okay, so she's switching, okay.
Yeah, she's switching.
So you're, you're kinda changing her. Was it a job title or how do you do that?
Um, we're just changing her to same job, cause she's gonna, we're narrowing her down to basically food services and and payroll. Because we don't think that that's probably gonna fit in the new position uh as well as it has. Uh, because they're such different tasks, I guess, responsibilities.
Yeah. Cause I know that we're in a a time crunch trying to get this done by January. But I s- I I feel like we should, we should follow our procedures and and open a position. Do the interview process, select people, and it's, I'm sure that it's you, but. To be transparent and to do all of those things, but. That's just my opinion. I I certainly wouldn't do it by doing an amendment to the old contract.
So Greg, you're in favor of um, would you be in favor of? Keeping Troy on through the end of the school year then? Is that?
Well, for me, I think part, part of it for me is I think that. Once we go through the process of of posting a position, doing the interviews. And then if Troy will be the guy, then we would negotiate a contract with him. Cause it will be different than this one, similar but different. And so then at that point, we could decide, are we gonna do six months? Are we gonna do a year? Or however the wording is, I mean, I'm open to either one of those things.
Oh, you, we'd need.
I agree with not doing three years.
But we'd need a contract that takes us through the the end of this school year, no matter what. And then in this February interview timeframe, that's when we do the interview process for a longer term contract for him. Is that what you're thinking?
No, I I'm thinking, I'm thinking trying to do it quicker than that. So like being able to post it, I know it's short, but. How long do you post them? Can we post it for three weeks? Do interviews in two weeks? Create a contract and have.
There's no way you can get that done by January.
If you, if you, if the board chooses to go that direction, I'll be looking for a job really quick because I won't.
Wouldn't look worse.
I'm risky. I'm not, I'm not real, used to taking that. I'm not used to taking that kinda risk.
So what's, what's the process then? What what's the procedural thing?
You wanna do.
Just recreate a new contract and have you sign it in January? Are you, is that what we're saying?
Which process are you asking for hiring or or rehiring me?
So we're rehiring you because you resigned. This contract has been terminated. So we have to rehire you and have a new contract.
Correct.
Yeah.
So the process for creating that new contract and determining that you're the guy.
Yeah, so we we have the authority as the board if if. We get the majority to rehire Troy back as of January one, for however long we agree it's appropriate. And renegotiate his contract for whatever period of time we want to offer that. I like the year by year. I like from January to January for now, but or from January to June. Through June of of next year um to give us, because if my thought is if we're gonna open it up to a recruitment. We wanna have it be meaningful and successful and. And I don't think we can have a meaningful and successful recruitment and i- there's just no way. It takes a long time.
No, I I agree.
But but we could in, we could in February if we if we want, and I'm not suggesting we wanna do this. But if Troy said that's the timeframe when you're interviewing and stuff, so. Um, right, if we could hire him right now for the remainder of the school year, which I, I mean, we have to. In some way or another and then, but it's only for that timeframe. And then in February, we have our our interviewing process where. I believe he'll be the top one out of it and we'll offer a long-term contract. I I'm fine with that, but I'm also fine with the doing a year and a half right now. Um, cause I, you know, I don't wanna leave Troy feeling like, you know, he's not the guy we want.
Well, if you open it up, you open it up in February, that's the message you're sending me.
I I know.
And I don't really care how Troy feels, but uh, no, really, but we can't, we as a board cannot get involved with that. But we can and must do like uh. Uh, Teresa talked about, I think we have to uh find a technique for allowing the public to. Um, make make a s- some statement. And I don't know, I don't understand the techniques to be used to make these steps hit. In a, in a responsible manner. Uh, I I I don't get how that's gonna work. I I totally agree with where Rob was saying though, that we're. Uh, with the pieces about, let's, let's figure out this year and a half. But and if we were running contracts from January to January. And my perception is that we would be setting it up so that uh we would have that. Oh, oh, overlap at the end of uh. At the end, if uh Troy decided to walk and we decide to hire somebody else. We'd have that overlap of several months so that there could be a right seat rider or transition time.
As far as the process, I've heard that question come up a couple times, you know, smaller districts um don't really have the personnel. Or or a school board that wants to to, you know, do the work of going through the process. So. What most small districts do is they hire, they hire a a contract, contract out with someone to do that. OSBA does that. Uh, and there are also uh several independent folks who do that. They come in, they survey your community, they help you understand what you're looking for. And then they go through all the, all the the process right up to the interviews. And then when they get to the interviews and the board's involved in the interview and hiring process.
Well, that's good to know.
Yeah, um, I I personally would. Like to see stability for our district for the next year. Just because of COVID and everything that's happening. So I'm inclined to um. To bring Troy back at least for another year, um if not eighteen months, but that's just one board member's opinion.
Two board members' opinion.
I've never, one thing, one comment on that, Sherry, appreciate it, but um, one thing I have never seen is a contract that goes January to January.
Yeah, and that's why, yeah, so I think we would, we would, uh, yeah, it did, so I think the eighteen month. Um, makes sense because you wanna have it cover the entire school year, but. But it could be that we do a year because we're hiring you back as retiree and. By the fall, by September is when we decide, are we gonna go out and have a competitive recruitment? For the following school year and then that would give you time. Um, so it could be that a year does make sense considering the situation, or it could be that eighteen months doesn't make sense, or we go with. Greg's um idea and try to do a recruitment quick and see um, which isn't my favorite choice.
Just to clarify your, what you just said, uh, Sherry, so you're saying, uh, you're wanting to look, potentially look at. Uh, starting the rehiring process next fall or, you know, this time next year.
Well, kind of decide by then if we're going to wanna extend you for another school year. Or if we wanna go out and um hire someone new. Or, you know, do a, do a recruitment, but I would think just to do it well, we would need to decide by. By fall of next year. Um, because then we could seek a a consultant, a headhunter, whatever you wanna call them. To come in and help us and get it all ready to go to post in January, February and then do that in twenty twenty-two, but that's just my opinion.
I would, I would, you know, request that it it would really be nice to know by, you know. This time of the year, latest maybe December fifteenth, whether or not you're gonna bring me back the following year.
Yep.
Greg, I I can't imagine going through an effective interview process in, you know, in February. I mean, it's.
Not possible.
I guess, I guess, I guess I'm not, I'm not saying that that's what we would do, but I think at some point during that. Let's call it, let's call the the first contract with Troy being an interim contract. So that's six months to a year. During that six months to a year, then we certainly should be able to go through that process. Otherwise, I I just, just based on what I read stuff, like it looks shady to people. And I know that we want Troy in the position and we probably rehire Troy. But I think it's that public image and and allowing public input and allowing people to apply for positions. All of those things that we should do. We should do that with anybody.
Correct.
It's a good point.
This isn't, this isn't for me, this isn't an evaluation of Troy's performance. It's. How we manage things.
Yeah, and 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 what process do we all agree is the best process? Moving ahead for the district and I I think that's just the the needle that that we need to keep. In front of us at all times and. And um, you know, depending on how this all, depending on what we decide. And I'm just thinking, I'm 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 gonna speak hypothetically. So let's say we agree that we wanna um. Enter negotiations with Troy to bring him back for a year. Let's just say from January through December thirty-first. Knowing that we're gonna use that time to really figure out what our key stakeholders are thinking if we get. And and this is something that maybe when we do survey community members, we survey administrators, we survey staff. Maybe the overwhelming majority believes that they wanna see Troy stay on through the twenty. Like through a whole nother school year and that would be a piece of information that's valuable to us. And at any time we can decide to. Start a recruitment and get that going and give Troy enough time. That he would be aware that at whatever point in time, okay, Troy, you're you're. We want your contract, we're extending your contact, contract through, let's say, March of twenty-two. We're gonna have a recruitment, you're welcome to apply and then see what happens. So just. Give him time in that to consider his options as well. But knowing Troy's feelings aren't our top priority from what people say.
Well, um. His feelings aren't my top priority, but him not writing resumes is. Um, and um, if. If it takes getting through the full next school year to to make sure that. That that we can sleep at night for the next, you know, six months. Um, I'm, I'm absolutely fine signing up for that right away with with, without any. Real input as long as we let the community know that this is, this is what we're doing. It's the, it's the, it's. Completely analogous to just renewing his contract. It's, it's completely analogous. It's just, you know, in this case, we're tearing up the old one and writing a new one. There's, there's no difference in it. And I think as long as we present it that way. Then we don't necessarily have to interview until we're ready to actually bring somebody on to replace him. Uh, I just, I don't wanna waste a bunch of time doing interviews if, um, you know, if, no, we're not gonna make a switch. You know, just to make the community feel okay. I think as long as we, as long as we're communicative, and I mean that, you know, that'd be you, Sherry. As to exactly what the process is, I, we'll be all right. You know, it's a frickin disaster. I know we can't hire somebody right now. It's a frickin disaster.
Yeah, I agree and and I I would just add, I'm in favor of. Offering an eighteen-month contract as of January one and committing ourselves to deciding. Um, by the fall of next year, if we want to then go out and start a recruitment. Or if we wanna offer Troy an another year extension, you know, that's another possibility as well. Um, I just think now is not. A time, I agree with everything you said, Rod. So that's my opinion.
And I believe I would kind of agree with those lines, but I. Want to within that process, say as this next year, whatever, get input. From the community, from the administrators, from the staff, which I believe would help guide us. In making a decision next fall.
Sh- Sherry, it seems to me that you have consensus for what uh for doing the eighteen month right now.
Well, I don't, Greg, Greg had some differences of opinion on it, I think.
I I still think I wouldn't go past a year. And I would, in that year's time, I would, like Teresa said, open it up, figure out a way to get public input as to how this process should happen.
And and maybe as part of that, we determine that we don't. Don't have to go through an interview process.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're buying time, I mean.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just don't wanna go through a dog and pony show interview process that, you know, is not me. I don't wanna do that. I mean. It'll, it'll look like a sham process too.
Yeah.
If we do a year. Okay, which would be from January to December, that would be. A year's contract. And if we decide that, you know, we are gonna open it up and we would say be interviewing. What's the possibl- I mean, are we looking at getting a superintendent to start? In January of twenty twenty-two or? In on July first of twenty twenty-two?
Yeah, and and that, and that's where the the idea of. Um, of a fifteen to eighteen month contract rather than just a year contract would. More, would give us more of a commitment from Troy to stay on to help onboard the next superintendent. But.
For us, it's either a six month, which doesn't give us probably enough time if we wanted to find another superintendent to really get a good quality candidate. Or it's the eighteen month. And have that time to decide. And if we did decide we need a new superintendent, we've got the time to recruit, to find some good candidates. Or we may just decide, no, we wanna continue on with Troy.
Yeah.
And I understand what Greg, you're saying about you, the controversy, you know, how the public's gonna feel. But I think a lot of people also would think, uh, kinda makes sense if we wanna get the best possible candidate. As a superintendent, be it Troy, be it someone else.
And and I would um echo what Troy mentioned earlier, his recommendation to. Time it so that there is an opportunity for overlap. Um, and I think the eighteen-month contract would give us. Um. I guess more of more comfort with that or more, there's no such thing as a sure thing, but. Um, I think it would be more likely to have some overlap if we do decide to hire a superintendent, going with an eighteen-month contract at this point.
Yeah, and I think, I think six months versus twelve months from from Troy's perspective is no different, right? In February, he's gotta start sending out resumes.
That's correct.
Yeah, so unless we get out to eighteen months, then Troy's sending resumes in February. And Troy's not gonna be very effective as our superintendent while sending out resumes to neighboring districts. But I've been in that situation and I know.
I know. This job is too demanding. If you don't, if you're not on it all the time, you're, you're gonna get a arrow right inside of your head. But no, you're absolutely correct, Rod.
That's, uh, that's the only reason, Greg, that's my, that's my whole reasoning to push the longer. And I know we may get some pushback from the community. Um, um. We certainly aren't gonna get any pushback for just doing an extension for for six months and probably not for up to twelve months.
And I, I think. Go ahead, Teresa.
That wasn't me, just a noise in my bathroom.
Oh, okay. Um, yeah, I, so I'm in favor of of um. Offering eighteen months for Troy as of January one. Um, that's just. Do we wanna go around and just say what we're thinking and then if, as long as we have the majority, we can move in that direction?
Um. I don't know. I think if somebody, Greg, like if you wanted to talk about it more like in the board, in the board meeting, in a more public session. Um, to go over it more, I mean, I I would certainly respect that. Um, but I'd also be comfortable. But I'd also be comfortable with doing the eighteen months right now, too.
I'd like.
How does that negotiation process take place? Is it the five of us sitting with Troy and saying, well, this is what we think the contract should say? Or is it just the chair person?
Yeah, so that's another another piece that we can decide on as part of the process. If if three or more of us are going to sit down with Troy and talk about his contract and negotiate that, that will have to be in a public meeting, which is fine. If we say we want one or two of us to represent the board in that negotiation. Then it can be a little more private and then report back to the board at a at the meeting. So really, it's up to us to decide how that negotiation. Will proceed. I like option two of of not having the whole board because I like the idea of being able to do it not in a public meeting, at least initially. And and maybe hammer out some draft language and present it to the board and then have it discussed and hammered out in. In a public meeting, but I'm I think we we can do it however we want.
Yeah, just a reminder to the board that anything that talks about the contract and, you know, the financials and the and the terms, that needs to be discussed in public session. When it's approved, yeah. To board when two board members are meeting, it's not, there's no decisions being made. You're just putting a proposal together.
Yeah. So what opinions do we have on that?
I like the thought process and the workup of the step by step by making it having the two people. Work out language and come up with us something it would, I think. It would make.
Bless you.
Thank you. It would make the public. Talk through the the time that we do in public. Much more focused for their purposes as well as ours. I I just, I think that has, I think that work session is important.
I I think I agree too that if we had two board members that could. Do the negotiation with him and come up with a recommendation.
Or at least a draft for.
Yeah, for draft, yes.
So then you so then whoever that whoever that is working that out would bring that to executive session for us to all talk about and.
No, has been.
I think it would come to our next board meeting in December.
Yeah, it'd have to be in public session.
Okay.
It would be, yeah.
So could we even see a draft of the contract ahead of that anytime? Or is that? You know what I mean, Sherry?
Yeah, it depends on how quickly we can we can get it done. It's November eighteenth. Yeah, I mean, I think we can easily come up with some. Sort of a draft. At least.
Yeah, I just I I'm not. I'm not really sure what's working behind the scenes and what's not, right? So if two people just have to go off and hammer it out and then bring something to the rest of the board in public. I'm okay with it going that way. But if there's a way to share that information, you know, and stay above board on it, that would be awesome.
And yeah, I think we can share the draft version ahead of time. Depending the timing of getting that draft kind of formal formally done.
Okay, but it's not like, okay, as long as we're not then providing feedback and changing the draft and all that stuff.
Right.
Okay, okay.
So I I think we have somewhat of an agreement. Greg, are you in agreement that it makes sense to have a couple of people rather than the whole board?
Yes, I like that plan. Yeah, so have two people sit down with Troy and come up with a draft. Bring it to the next school board meeting and then have an open discussion about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And is anyone thirsty to be part of that duo?
I can do it as long as it's a Wednesday or Thursday that we get together.
Yeah, I was really good. To recommend Greg and you, Sherry. I mean, you guys.
I'm fine with that. Does anybody else really want to? Participate?
No, I just I want to, you know, my my feelings are that whatever we're whatever we're doing. Should look good relative to what we've done for the other employees in the district.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, thank you. I agree too.
Yeah, we really don't want it back from the teachers because we're we're, you know, overcompensating and that's that's my. That's my only concern. I don't know what he asked for. I have the sample contract in in front of me, but I don't know.
Yeah. So the plan will be for Greg and I to meet with Troy and come up with a draft contract. Keeping Troy on, and I'm just going to say for eighteen months and just based on what I heard tonight, but. It will be brought to the board meeting in December for discussion and nothing is decided until we all. Until we have a a majority approving whatever form of a contract we end up with, and it could be that we need another. Work session in December and then another, you know, special meeting or something before the end of the year. If 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 we don't reach agreement by our December meeting, we can there are ways to to give us a little more time. So. Does that sound like that's good?
No. I I like having Greg on there because you're the one that did have most of the reservations about the shorter contract, so you'll be right in the middle of that mix. So.
Agreed.
You'll be you'll be giving your recommendation.
I agree completely, Rod.
All right. Anything else we need to talk about? Troy, thank you. I know this, and thank you to everyone. I know this isn't.
Sherry, do you want me to send out some dates or do you want to do that?
Um, what dates did you say, Greg?
Wednesdays usually are okay for me.
Like during the day?
Yeah, they're pretty free most of the time.
Okay, not next Thursday. It's Thanksgiving. Don't forget. I forgot. I just realized.
There's only three of us. We can eat turkey together.
You're not supposed to celebrate Thanksgiving this year, are you?
I got three at our house, too.
Um, Troy, why don't you and I communicate? Well, and then we'll we'll see.
Okay.
Yeah, let's let's you and I start and then we'll loop Greg in on on the final time because my work schedule might be a little challenging. But we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Hey, Sherry, you may, we may want to, or you may want to, as the chair, do some kind of communication pretty soon about this.
Okay.
You know, just just sort of what our, you know, what our intent is, you know, that we're we're planning on keeping Troy on at least in the short term, you know, whatever you can say.
No, I like that. That's a really good. That's a really good idea. Yes.
Because people know he's leaving, right? People know he's leaving. And, you know, some of the emails I got were even from people that don't like Troy very much that want him to stay.
Yeah.
But I have somebody to throw targets at.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. Anything else before we call it?
No.
All right, I'm adjourning at eight forty nine.
Good evening.